It was on just a second ago and it just went off. Literally, I just touched it a minute ago and it was there. Try to be so gentle with it, it's a little aggressive. Last time we had to... Metaphil with it. Got it to come... Oh, okay, it's loading. Okay. I'll try to be... Again, very gentle.
It's a lot cooler in here than in your office.
Here, Ryan, did you see we set up certified on that?
Yeah. Well, word got out, Jared's setting the pool so we can get a full house tonight.
Really?
Our boiler went down in the ice cream.
Oh.
And I think it fell maxed out at 10% by the week.
That'd gotta be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause that's not cheap. We can...
And it never goes low, low bound.
And that one will be a lot more expensive than our other ones just because it's been...
Ceramic or something that stop it?
Uh, it'll either be aluminum, line, or stainless steel line. There's so much goes...
I didn't realize that Athens is like a pool. So they don't have a swim team?
They have a... They've never had a pool.
That's why they have all those wrestlers.
I was gonna say, no wonder. They run... They don't have a... And the city doesn't have any input on recreation. It's all through the school.
Yeah.
Yeah, they take their whole mill levy and...
So does Green River.
It has nothing to do with... Yeah, the community doesn't have anything. Green River and Rock Springs have recs and everything.
Yeah, but they use mill money to buy them.
But they don't use the rec money. Yeah, I know.
Yeah, but Athens looks good.
Oh, man, you doing up there?
It doesn't look good?
No, Facebook was...
Oh, no!
Facebook is nuts. In fact, I was gonna say, they just started a big Facebook thing about how bad it is to kids.
Yeah, it went quite... It must have been two weeks ago, looked good.
It's not good. I called Kim yesterday. And Steven called Kim yesterday. And I said, "Kim, if you're getting ready to present to the board, you better have a..."
Plan.
"Plan." I'm gonna give him one more year.
So it was a month ago when I went by, before the board meeting.
And all the spring rains and everything like that.
What is so hard about watering now long? You know, it's probably like my yard. I have about a half inch of topsoil and then rocks the size of basketballs.
You know, the city's not paying for the water. Just pour the water on that thing and...
Yeah? Crap, I'm gonna step out and that comes up.
Don't be, don't be surprised.
Well, I'm sure it'll come up.
Oh, I do. That's a constant issue. Why you think she figured that out by now?
And she works like a block away.
Yeah, we are live right now, so just in case.
Whoops.
We're muted, all right?
I don't want you to hear me.
So yeah, that might come up. Like, comment or... Well, will she be here to do that?
I don't think so. He told me she would be here. She doesn't need beer. I don't need beer.
I would really like to know what Cheyenne's thinking. With that CKA.
I think they just tried to avoid it. And you notice it says policy?
Yeah, but they didn't... Oh, yeah, but the only judge that has ruled on that is our district court judge. I guess I could ignore that. I worked with her on the hospital floor, Rock Springs.
I remember doing that.
You do remember? I just now noticed it.
One garden spilling. Just amended to ask for people next to it. Weird being out here before the board meeting.
Travis is a...
So am I sometimes. That's an engine repair. Matt, hey, did you know that we meet once a month for these board meetings? Every month, it's the second Tuesday. I don't know if you were aware, but...
Is it every month?
Your name plaque's been there, but...
Somebody told me it changed. Quarterly. I was just telling somebody. I think it's true. I think it's true. Yeah, for Christ's sake, I've been looking.
Oh, I know. I'm teasing. Four? No, five. Yeah, choice please. This bishop brother died.
Yeah, okay, so...
This bishop brother died, they assigned to temporary. He could only be there for a very, very, very time. Then they assigned another temporary, and then they assign a third temporary. And he now has...
Because we were talking, I gotta go ask a treatment, I was talking to someone. Terrible, terrible. He's loved everyone. The one he has now, he's a little bit odd, but they like him. He's a senior anesthesiologist. Yeah, he made the news because he was seeing his patients. While he was ministering a seizure, I guess.
Just lullaby them right up there?
I don't know. But, uh, he likes it. He was a little quirky. Quirky's all right. He had... He had one, three of them. But this French guy, he was actually really enthusiastic. And, uh, he would just like root from the millions. And I got... I'm just gonna be real quirky, but... Loved him. And he would have to... Tears and mashing. Love that story. So, I don't know. It's worked out good. He's now in my mission, I'm just trying to...
You're the first time?
Yeah. I didn't ever see him, man. Spent a lot of time there. Yeah, it's gonna be... How's James? Is he still out there with the sticks? So is he like that? What a change, though, with the donkey.
From what I understand, just keeps it all...
Wow, that's impressive. That's crazy. Good presentation.
Just wanted to see him real, man.
Yeah, yeah. He said it was Japanese. To make sure mentally prepared.
He comes. We're kicking now. No, yeah, we're all... No, we're kicking now. Even if I won't. Matt and I will rough him up. No, but we do need to... We're gonna shut him down. I'll be prepared for that. I'll let Dave go do that. Good idea. You the new special editor?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we do this every month. I wasn't sure he knew.
Yeah. Just curious.
Yeah, I heard the other guy was a pro.
You got that right.
Well, they say we're a lot alike.
Yeah, you got that right.
How'd you know? You might have known.
Well, I just met you.
You didn't see yourself on that agenda? You're on there. There you have John, is John? Oh, really? John, hello, this is... He'll probably watch on YouTube.
The whole being taken out.
He is. He's on it.
Sherry, thanks.
Oh, yeah. Sorry about the confusion.
Thank you.
When Doug came and asked me...
Worked out perfect.
I said, "If there's not enough, like..."
We have plenty.
Well, they didn't... I thought they were in there and they weren't. So Doug was thinking they were in here like they usually are. Because I didn't have them in there. So there was some confusion.
I would...
Anyway. Luckily, I said something to Ryan about it and he said, "Oh, they're in there." Oh, okay.
Get a yearbook, wow.
Wow, I know how to pack a room.
Standing room only?
Yeah.
All right.
You may leave, mate.
Do what you want to do.
Let's see, kids. It smells new. Fresh off the press. Oh, good. Um, we... Yes, we did. I'm going back.
I think Ryan did the motion.
Ryan did the motion, yeah. So we're going back? Yes, we're gonna go back. We will go back.
What do you think if they are going back in executive section?
Jaren, I don't have internet again. Oh, maybe here it's connected. There you go. It just is slow.
She just paid it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Man, where's our student rep?
He graduated.
Where's the new president?
That unpaid position, you can't expect him to stick around. Well, of course, I should have worked here.
We're all on page.
Who's the new student body president?
Uh, they will do that, I think they do that in...
In the fall.
Not sure.
Hey, well, we're live. Maybe this is gonna be a surprise. Why are we talking about this?
Yeah, isn't that fun?
Dominic Stewart.
There you go.
All right. I guess the world knows now. Cat's out of the bag. Oh, okay.
Hey, Dave, before we begin, refresh my memory, did we establish or adopt a two-minute limit on public comment?
No, we can set that beforehand if we would like to. But it, we don't, we haven't had that.
Yeah, there's no public here.
Yeah, so... We can if there seems to be a big group. Oh, I see what you're... I'm not public. I know what direction you're going down now. Wow.
Caught. You caught me.
Yeah.
No, I was just curious because I know it was something that got discussed and I couldn't remember the outcome.
No, we, we, we didn't pass it through a resolution or anything, but we can set limits if we have a bunch of people here.
Okay.
Or if they start to linger on a little bit on subject matters.
We'll do it on the fly.
Yeah, we'll see. But, yeah, because I think if we... There might be some discussions that might be longer than three minutes that is worthy of having. And if we say you're at three minutes and ding a bell and stuff we still want to discuss or address, I don't want to be limited to that. Does that make sense?
Well, I'm sure we have the right to extend. Okay, cool. Thank you.
You were just worried about somebody in the audience today extending their...
Pretty unruly looking crowd in here today.
Can I call an SRO? Okay, it is 6:01 and I need to call to order the Unitah County School District Number One Board of Trustees School Board Meeting. I need a motion to go into that meeting.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion? None? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ken's not working. Okay. I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion. Second. I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda items, A, B, C, D, and E, uh, for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. I hope nobody wanted to discuss it. All right. We can now move on to our presentations.
We have no presentations, Mr. Chairman.
You guys are all gonna all meet dinner.
All in favor?
We have no presentations for tonight. We will now move on to discussion items. Mr. Thomas.
Chairman Peterson, members of the board, just quickly, just wanted to review the meet and confer agreement. I appreciated the board members that were in attendance and supported, uh, the board and the district. As always, I think it went well. Like I said, I appreciate EEA's positive stance and didn't get everything they wanted and we didn't get everything we wanted. But if you would like, I would just like to review kind of the points quickly. What ended up out of meet and confer. Number one, you can see the first one is salary and insurance renewal. Uh, four steps and the district will pay 100% of the health, health insurance renewal with two benefit changes and a new certified salary schedule. The big winner, I think, in negotiations this year is certified staff and that certified salary schedule. We're probably one of three districts now in Wyoming that have a salary schedule that tops out over $100,000. And I hope in the future we can continue to add that. I think, um, it's just a necessary thing that, uh, our most experienced teachers can make a income that is worthy of them. Probably the best way to put it. So, anyway, that, that's the good thing. Four steps for our certified staff is $3,000. Four steps for our support staff is, um, a dollar. And you can kind of see that. One is four steps for certified, second is four steps for, um, support. We adopted a new staff salary schedule. We went through it. I met with the EEA previous to negotiations, so they knew it was coming and, and they had some good questions, but we went through it. Um, it will be effective 7-1. The health insurance, I think, again, is a nightmare. You can see that with this increase, it increased our health insurance almost just over $700,000. So 1.6 in new money, $700,000 of that went to health insurance. I understand that we need to do some things different and we'll continue looking at our health insurance. We'll talk a little about that later in the agenda, but what we're kind of planning to do, so I won't go through it now. So that total package is 1.795 million dollars in those expenses. Remember, we received 1.6 million dollars in new money. How that works is some of this is salaries for reimbursable, reimbursable employees. So we can go a little deeper into that 1.6, which we have. There is an understanding, I think it's important, EEA understands and agrees that a base increase or a step is not guaranteed and is a permanent reoccurring cost and may result in a reduction of staff salary and/or benefits for the 26, 27 school year if student enrollments declines and revenues from the state do not increase. That is one thing that's unique about our new salary schedule. The goal is always two steps on the new salary schedule. It has 50 steps total, which would be a $1,500 advancement for a year of experience. But we have the flexibility in a good year to give more than that and a bad year to give less than that. So it does provide us some flexibility moving forward in the future, which we don't know what's gonna happen. Uh, proposal two is just $100 for workshop attendance. I can tell you that we've, we're already spending money there. We've had 60 teachers last week, um, doing efficiency standards and, and, uh, assessments. So we're working, uh, they spent a lot of good time in the summer preparing for the next school year. Uh, so that $100 is a good, good proposal. Use of employee benefit fund, again. If you recall, one of the commitments that John and I made, the board, is, uh, we're gonna pay back the amount of money used on the domes into the reserve. So you can see that, uh, the EBF for the employee benefit fund for lifetime of service stipend is $100,000. We moved about $225,000 into the EBF. $125,000 of that is the payback of the money we spent on the domes. We'll keep doing that until we get to that figure which the board feels is appropriate. We kind of talked about a 10-year commitment to do that, so, um, that's kind of where we are with that and it kind of shows where that is. I'll show you that in the, the budget too. Proposal four, um, 11 general leave days, we haven't changed that. And flexible days plus the earned days for support staff. We did have a pretty good discussion, which I'll show you at the end, about, uh, the way leave is going now. Uh, proposal five is allow one point on the athletic attendance salary schedule, which is about $125 per point. And that does still cost about $25,000. You can see that we're gonna add to food service bus drivers and teachers the, uh, amount of money for substitutes, uh, about $80,000. So we do pay a little bit for substitutes. Proposal seven, uh, to allow horizontal advancement. Now, because of the new salary schedule, horizontal advancement is $1,500 instead of $750. So again, another benefit of the new salary schedule. Uh, additional topics to discuss. Uh, we are gonna continue the insurance committee. Uh, we'll approach you later with, uh, an RFP to go out to bid for a consultant to help us through that. Explore a self-funded program, pros and cons. And also, we've committed, uh, with the EEA to look at whizbait or web. Um, and so that'll be part of that process. Um, we received a proposal from Morton to do that. It exceeds the amount that we can do without going out to bid. So that's why we're gonna request to go out to bid. Let's see, uh, the leaves, we're moving to computer-based system. Discussion and suggestions on misrepresentation of leave by employees. I don't know why this is near and dear to me, but it just drives me nuts that we have one of the most lenient leave policies and we have people that misrepresent their leave. So we've had some discussions with that. EEA two years in a row and we'll continue to work with our principals on that. Leave, concerns about leave, including the lack of bank sick leave and the use of leave during the school year. Discussion will include changes to incentives, catastrophic leave, leave categories to clarify the district's position on the purpose of leave in 185-day, uh, school year. Possible suggestions for catastrophic leave changes. What's happening and the trend we're seeing, um, is less and less employees are banking their sick leave. If you recall, the overall picture of our leave policy is to provide our staff an opportunity to miss school on those 185 days to do business they could not normally do at another time. Um, so if your son or daughter is competing, we allow them to use personal leave to go watch them compete somewhere. But what's happened is the trend of the new generation is basically exhaust all your leave. So we've lost that idea that you're committed to 175 days with kids. If you have a situation where you can't, you can take leave. Now, everyone's gonna take 10 days. So what I worry about is those younger teachers not generating a sick leave bank, which they can use in the future, which they can use when they have children, blah, blah, blah. It's, it's a trend that is worrisome. What we hear is they say, "Well, I'll just use catastrophic leave when I have that emergency. I don't need a sick leave bank." The other side of that is, um, the idea of the leave incentive. If you don't use your leaves, we're paying $100 a day for that and it still rolls into your sick leave bank. And it's not the incentive it used to be. $1,000 just doesn't seem attractive to our younger teachers now. They'd rather miss 10 days. So it's something that, again, as more experienced individual, I'm gonna have to learn. How do we change that policy, um, to make sure that we're protecting our employees in the long run and we're not, um, shorting the kids? Because that's the bottom line, is if every employee used 10 days, it would drastically impact the quality of our education system. Anyway, that's, I've spent a lot of time thinking about that. Catastrophic program that we have, leave donation is a very good program. We don't want to take away from that, but I think there needs to be some safeguards in place. We've talked about a lifetime usage. We've talked about a lifetime usage. For those of you that are unfamiliar, certified staff can have up to 90 days of catastrophic leave every year. We've never, we've seen abuse, but not on a large scale, and we try to deal with the abuse one-on-one. Support staff only get 30 days. So you can see that it's talked about maybe cutting those days in half or a lifetime cumulative benefit or eligible for 45 days that kind of renews after five to 10 days. So the EEA was not opposed to any of those. They actually kind of, I think, liked some of those suggestions because that's where that leave comes from. It's donated from our certified staff and our support staff. They don't want to see it abused either. They don't want to see it going away either. So it is a great benefit for those that truly have a catastrophe in their life. We support their salary. So that is, that negotiated agreement, roughly $2.194 million of expenditures. I can tell you that, and we'll get into this next month, but we still have money for our departments and for other budgets. We're still kind of tightening that up. I'll talk about the budget in a minute, but the lion's share of our new funds went to our staff, and that's where it should go. That's always been my commitment and our commitment. So anyway, that is the agreement that you will approve later. Any questions or any comments from those who were there?
The only thing I did not see, I have not seen the new schedule. Has that been distributed to all staff and employees? It has?
I actually do a meet and confer message video, and it goes out in an email, and all of this is attached, including that new salary schedule.
Okay. I must have.
And I think you get all the, all staff emails.
Yeah. I just must not have paid attention. So sorry.
Just, I was there and it was great to, like you said, Ryan, that the funds we, additional funds we received went straight towards the staff, and being able to cover health insurance costs is a huge benefit so that these steps actually are raises instead of just going towards health insurance. So I think there's some major wins for our staff and hopefully the state keeps continuing to fund education.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
That's all I had for that. We'll approve it later.
Okay. We can move on to discussion item B, draft budget presentation.
Mr. Williams is not here. He is taking a well-deserved vacation. He really had to crunch numbers to get to where we could provide $2 million in new revenue for our staff, so he was definitely ready to go for a break. So I spent some time with him talking about this. The best way to explain what he's, where kind of where we are with the budget is his budget message update. I think it's really interesting. The first paragraph deals with what the effect of the property tax reduction will be, and as we anticipated, the effect is declining revenues from the district and declining revenues from the county. How that impacts us is it really doesn't because we have an entitlement. It will significantly impact the state because we have less local resources. That means the state needs to kick more into our entitlement. And you can see, I think John talks about the decrease. It's 17% for the district and 22% for the county in terms of that assessed valuation. So it is significant. It'll be interesting to see. I would like to know how the state is going to maintain that. This will reduce the overall revenue into the school account, school education account statewide. So they're going to have to come up with more money for every district. It will be interesting. Probably, again, we'll just have to see how it goes. It will impact our city and county probably greater than us because, like I said, we have an entitlement. The challenge we have is we base our budget on the 100. We still have not received it. So these are all estimates. I would trust John's estimates before anyone else's for several reasons. Number one, he's pretty conservative. These are, you can see the overall reductions in most of these accounts because of that property tax deduction. I'm just going to, hopefully you guys are okay going quick, quickly to the, this page because John summarizes it off to the side. So our guarantee is 38 million. You add in the special ed reimbursement of 9 million, Wyoming retirement. Because we, because our employees pay 3.68% of their Wyoming retirement, the state pays us our portion of that, which is 547,000. Off-montal revenues is our, right now is our employee benefit fund. So you can see the total guarantee is 49 million in revenue. So 50 million roughly, give or take a few, and that's what we're anticipating for revenue. Like I said, these are all estimates, but from John, they're pretty good conservative estimates. Any questions about that part of it? We'll go and, John will be here next month and go into more detail with the budget. This last part, as of June 6, we do not have the May receive June revenues, so we're not sure what's going to happen with that. How that works is if we receive more than our entitlement, we are in net excess collected. The additional money has to be reserved for next year. We already received money for next year this year. If it's less than our entitlement, we have a tax shortfall grant, which the state makes up. That is a big part of our budget, but John cannot do that because we haven't received those revenues yet. And if you can see, again, his guess, my guess is that we have a surplus based on last year's June taxes. Because those funds are received in the prior year, June 2025, they will gross up the fund balance and the revenue will be reduced accordingly. So we should see an increase in our fund balance because of that. And that is not net excess collected, so that should remain in our fund balance. If you remember, we talked about 2.8 million when we were audited, and he kept saying, no, it's really 3.5 million. And I said, John, why can't you just say it's 3.5 million? And he says, well, we haven't received it yet. Well, we have. So that's what he's talking about. We have received that. There is a preliminary budget that you guys have access to, meet and confer numbers along with staff changes, operational budgets, and all assumptions that are aware of are in that budget. So as of now, it's a pretty good draft budget. These numbers, some formatting will change, but it'll be given an indication of the current status of the budget a month plus out until July 16 budget adoption. Calculations such as fund balances, amended budgets, and net positions will be added later. So again, kind of where we need to be at this time in our budget process, next month to their budget hearing on Wednesday, the 16th. Any questions? One other thing I wanted to let you take a peek at, and this is our increase in meal prices, which becomes part of the budget, and I believe you guys approve later. We just thought it was good that you do that. I can tell you, because of some effort, very good effort on Sheila's part, our director, and increased meal prices, our transfer to food service, I think, is going to be lower than we anticipated. The high for us is around half a million dollars. The low for us would be around $100,000, so we'll know that next month. That is really good news because that difference of 100,000 to 500,000 is 400,000 that we can put other places. And where it would be is our operating budgets. So we're hoping that holds true. You can see that these meal prices are not drastic increases, and Sheila can answer if you have questions. You can see our current prices and then the new prices. Still extremely reasonable for a lunch, and we haven't raised our prices in I don't know how many years. Has it been, Sheila? At least five. I spent time with the professional judgment panel today, and this was something I really pushed hard, is the state needs to reimburse either the transfers to food service or pay 100% of the food service, like the feds did during COVID. That would really be great for us and for every student in this state. So we're pushing that. Hopefully that'll go through. Any questions about the prices?
Just great job, Sheila, on the summer school lunch program. I know Aspen's been busy.
You say 1,000 kids today or yesterday?
Over 1,000 meals just last week.
Yeah.
That's all I had, Chairman.
I have one question, Ryan. Who makes that decision from the state to reimburse us?
The legislature.
That's what I was afraid you were going to say.
Yeah. So again, the professional judgment panel are the consultants, asking us questions, what's going well, what we think. They will make a recommendation, and just from their body language, I think they all agree that the state should be paid for lunches. Colorado has gone that way, and they've found great success. What we saw during COVID was our numbers went up in terms of usage. Kids will eat. The sad thing is they don't eat because they don't want to pay the price, and they don't want to fill out our free introduced lunch application. So I would even go for half, you know, whatever. Just help us, support us, reimburse our food costs directly because we work hard to, use the quote ops, to purchase our food, and those prices are going up too, so. But yeah, it's the legislature. I personally think they would be more willing to buy lunches for kids than pay salaries for teachers.
We can go on to, is there any more discussion with that?
No.
Okay. We can move on to discussion item C, the first reading policy, six designated facilities.
Yeah. Hopefully the first thing you see is we changed the name.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
From what, I told you I didn't really like the name. I found one that used designated facility to usage.
Okay. Thank you.
It is pretty straightforward. It is new. The bottom line, this identifies as facilities as male and female, and it does allow accommodations, but the accommodations aren't to allow them in dressing rooms that don't match their gender of birth.
Should language be in there that says biological, female, biological, male? Because you can still script that.
I think the language is in there. I'd have to go back through it, but it does say, I think, at birth and...
If that's our, if that's the intent.
Yes, and that's, that was the law's intent, very clearly, I believe. So what it does is it refers to 213137, which is state statute that does, I'm pretty sure identifies it by birth.
It does. Okay. Cool.
I had a question, just randomly. When I was helping with the women's conference, which we, you know, provide, have provided space for, when we did that, we would tape a sign on the men's bathroom that it was a women's bathroom for that day, right? Because, you know, there's 300 women in the building, and it doesn't make sense to not be using all the facilities. So does that, does that, can we still do that?
You can.
In that kind of event?
They talk about that.
Yeah, it's pretty clear in here. So for example, for the girls' locker room during a wrestling tournament, we can identify it as a locker room for Green River visitors, whatever. So yeah, it's pretty clear now that you can do that if necessary.
I just wanted to clarify.
Good question.
So we will recommend that you approve this at first reading. Like I said, this is basically what was recommended by Wyoming school boards with the new legislation. That's all I have for that.
Okay. Any other questions?
None.
Okay. Discussion item D, first reading policy, ING, policy and procedures on service animals in schools.
What, and we talked about this briefly, what this has done is just taken, there was some amendments to the law this session. It just adds that in, and really what it is, is the idea that a service animal is a dog that is not only trained, but is in training. That in-training is what's new. And that you should be trained by a, someone who's certified or by the disabled individual themselves. So that's part of the new law. So those are really the only two changes. So we stuck right with the law.
I found it, I read in there about horses.
Miniature horses.
I was, I was kind of, I stepped back from that and went, what's this about? I mean, how many, how many students do we have that need a...
We've had one.
You know, but do we...
Really?
But shouldn't? I just find it kind of...
Well, it's weird how they've clearly defined a dog in a miniature horse.
Those are the only two service animals.
That's the only two service animals. I just can't imagine a miniature horse walking down the hallways of a high school. I mean, you know, if that's what a child, which is what he needs, then that's, I understand that.
Yeah, it's in there. It's clearly, it's within this, miniature horses.
Yeah. No, and that's the law.
The only two that are approved.
I mean, they went through the grooming standards. I mean, it's got to be potty trained, so, you know, house trained. I don't mean to make fun of it, but I just kind of thought, this is strange.
Clearly defined one animal outside of a different one, right?
Right.
So originally, this came about because at one point in our schools, we were inundated with comfort animals. And so this policy was put together, we allow service animals that fit these criteria, not comfort animals. So that really changed. You couldn't mean cats or turkeys or dogs, or dogs you can't, but...
Snakes.
Snakes.
That's the first thing that popped in my head, some kid wearing a snake. The animal needs to be certified.
You can't just bring a dog, though. It has to be certified.
No, no. That's what the policy is saying. Yep. Or you can't just bring a horse.
Yes.
We had an ex-board member who brought a horse last day of school, right? That's a funny story. Maybe for another time. That was a long time ago. Any other questions? It is unique. I remember saying, no, we, but it's the law.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions or discussion on service animals?
So will this go into effect next year?
7-1. Well, 7-16, second reading. Oh, it'll go into effect next year. Next?
Next, on discussion items E, rule CKA, notice of intent to modify rule CKA. Mr. Thomas, it was a lot of red.
Yeah. So we're going to pass this out. So Mr. Phillips and I took a shot at CKA with the new law, and you did see that it's a lot of red. The red you don't see is the regulations now, we have four of them, will also be done. So you, as a board, you have some choices, and Jeff, help me out here to make sure we get this right. You can choose basically to let CKA sunset and choose not to do anything else. I think we probably still have to go through the process of letting it go, not do a policy, just follow the law. Some districts are choosing to do that. Or you can do something like this. As soon as we, and I'll say require something of our employees, we have to provide the training. What, the red that you see is requiring is they notify us that they're going to carry. Once they notify us, we have an obligation to provide training and initial recertification and certification. That will allow us, I believe, and I think Jeff does too, if someone doesn't either meet the qualifications in terms of the training or violates anything in this policy in terms of use or abuse, we can deny them access by law. If we don't do anything, our first option, we cannot deny an employee to concealed carry. We cannot ask them if they have a concealed carry permit. I think we're extremely limited to what the law allows anyone to walk into our schools with a weapon.
You wouldn't be able to suspend someone.
Their privileges from concealed carrying either if they buy, if they were irresponsible
in the way that they were concealed carrying.
So, so I guess my question, because there's so many different policies that come about, and then you have to sign off on it. If we, we, because I don't want to say it's in conflict with the legislative body of what they passed, do we have to have the employees sign off that they agree with this new CKA rule that we have?
The new law allows us to say, if you're going to, if you're an employee or volunteer in our school and you're going to carry, you need to notify us. in our school, and you're gonna carry, you need to notify us, and then we have to provide the training.
Yeah, and actually, Brian and I haven't talked about this too much yet, because we're still working through this. We're not ready, for sure. But, the reality is that the statute doesn't prevent us from regulating concealed carrying, as long as we allow it.
Of our employees and volunteers.
Of our employees and volunteers. As long as we allow it, we can move forward regulating it. So, arguably, we could pretty much do exactly what we're already doing. I know that, I don't think Brian wants to do that for a few reasons, even if, just because someone gets impractical at this point. But, if the board chooses to keep what we essentially have, and maybe make a few tweaks, we could do that as an option. We can do nothing, although the consequences of doing nothing are significant. We expose ourselves to all kinds of liability. We have no way of suspending a privilege or a right to carry if we have an employee or volunteers misbehaving or abusing that privilege, that right. It, there are several consequences that are awfully risky to us if we just let it go. And I don't know what these other districts are, I think Ryan and I are anxious to see what some of the other districts are going to do. We've looked at a couple, and they're a bit of a head shaker. I think that several districts are going to be working through this in a challenging way, but, sorry, I didn't mean to take...
No, you're perfect. What, because this is, you guys realize this is, this is a tough topic anyway, but it's gonna be more challenging because of the work we've done, but less challenging because of the work we've done in the past. What I mean by that is we already had a policy in place that works. The reason why I'm not suggesting we keep our old CKA is because we put things in there in 2001, from between 2017 and 2001, because we had to, to meet the court's obligation. We don't have to now. We don't have to specify the ammunition we use. So, why would we? Let's take it out. It causes more issues. I believe it gives someone a better opportunity to sue us if the ammunition used wasn't what was in their policy. So, let's just take it out. The training is in this new rule. I took it out of CKAR4, which is our training requirements, and now it's in this. So, we don't need CKR4. It's duplicate. Trainer qualifications, which is CKR, CKAR2, is now in this. We don't need a separate regulation. And CKAR1 is the application. We cannot, as I understand it, do a psychological evaluation, have a requirement that they've been in our district a certain period of time. Right now, we require five years or approval from the board. We can't do those things.
I think we can.
I think we can. I don't think we want to. I don't think it's fair to our employees. Joe Q. Public can come in without any of that stuff done. So, why would we require that of our employees? We don't need to. I don't think we do. If we don't do something like this, then we can't limit our employees, or even know who's carrying. The other thing that we can do in this, as you go through it, it's a mess, because we cut out a great deal and added a great deal. We can indicate that you cannot open carry in our facilities. I think that is vital, the law. So, you can't come to this meeting with a gun on your hip. That's now in policy if we do this. So, what I'm recommending is, when we get to the part to pass this, is table it. Give Jeff and I another month. This is what we have to do to pass this. This is the nightmare. This is not a policy. This is a rule. So, first thing we're gonna have to do is, you guys are gonna have to take a look at this rule, and say, we move forward with it or not. If we move forward with it, we have to follow this procedure. If it's not, I still think we have to follow this procedure to get rid of rule CKA. So, part of the...
Either another, we're going to be following that procedure.
Part of the process is a rule, then the notice, and then all the documents that are along with that, and then a 45-day, I thought it was interesting, 45 days is what the law says, but they recommend 50-something.
30 to 55.
Yeah. So, we would do the 50, because we've been sued on procedurals before. We would dot our i's and cross our t's. So, 45 days, 50 days, we're not gonna get to this probably until, what, November? We have to have, we don't have to. I want to have a public hearing on this, so it's open and public. We have a new system where individuals can comment right on our board stuff, if Sheri and I can figure out how to do that. But anyway, that's coming. You guys realize that once we open that, that period, if you talk to anyone about rule CKA, you have to take notes and submit it as public comment? Because we got bit on that last year, last time. So, I gave you this so you could keep it, and just realize this is a, the rulemaking process was not designed for school districts. One of the things we have to do is post it at the county clerk's office. There's no such thing. We take a copy in and put it in a book, but we don't post that anywhere. But that's the law. So, again, my recommendation, I think we need to move forward and modify rule CK. That allows us to identify our employees, notify the police, work with the police in terms of this, provide training. The training has a certificate part into it, qualification part, so if they don't qualify, we can say, no, try again next year. If they leave their gun on the toilet seat, we can tell them, nope, you lost your privilege. If we don't do any of that, we can't do that. So...
So, if we go down that road, and someone fails qualification, for example, and we say, no, you can't do this, do we then open ourselves up for them to come in and say, well, now you're violating my rights?
Yes, we do. But, that's what's nice. This statute allows us to do that. Only employees and volunteers if we have a rule. We can't do that.
We ought to sue us if the legislature's in power, use the board to create regulations.
Okay, so it takes away their ability to sue us in the event that we say, no, you can't?
Yeah.
Well, clearly that we need to address that.
Yeah.
What we can't do is restrict concealed carry on school property anymore, cart launch.
The interesting thing for me is, since we've been through this since 2017, I'm not really worried about the employee part of it. Other districts in the state are mortified about the employee part of it. I'm more worried about people coming into our school, and into our athletic events, and into our choir concerts, that are concealed carrying. We cannot ask them if they have a concealed carry permit. We cannot ask them to leave. Jeff was telling me it's a $2,000 fine and a misdemeanor, and I go to jail for a year if I tell someone I want to see your permit.
Let law enforcement do that. But they've been doing it all along, anyway.
Yeah, they have.
It's no real change. They've been doing it.
Yes. But we could have done something if their gun would have fallen out at a wrestling match.
Now, now it's...
So, I do think it's important that we notify that you don't open carry. We can do that by this law.
Well, just as a safety issue, to be able to know who among our employees are concealed carrying, notify law enforcement if there's an incident, I mean, for several reasons, liability, it's a really good idea.
So, is there a difference between making a brand, is the question here, do we make a brand-new rule from scratch, or we modify CKA into, into the rule? That's the question that we have to decide?
Yeah.
One of them.
Yeah.
And one is a six, you know, 60-day process, go till November, and the other, we would have resolved...
There's only one process.
There's only one process.
No matter how we do this, we have a rule that we have to deal with.
There are things in our current policy that I really, really like, that other districts don't have. The model policy that they developed for the new law, ours is better.
I could, yes.
Because we've been challenged in court.
They did a good job.
Three times? How many times were we challenged in court?
They did a good job, though. The staff really came together to develop a good program.
And the other part that has been left out at this point, and is a big part of the process, is our relationship with law enforcement. They were very supportive originally. We'll have to put that together. And I guarantee it, they want to know who's carrying in our schools. And if you go through this, hopefully, the red doesn't distract you, but it does allow us to communicate to our principals who's concealed carrying, which would be nice to know. And we can't do that if we don't adopt a rule. So, what, what I think our notice should be is modify our current rules, CKA. And it drastically cuts out fat.
So, our immediate rule is to do nothing?
Yep. Table it.
I am so good at that.
Unless you have some ideas or suggestions, if that's true, then get in touch with us.
The law goes into effect July 1, though? So, what, where does the district stand between July 1 and when we finish our rule in November?
CKA is null and void July 1.
So, employees could start the school year, and we have no right to ask until we implement this?
But you guys need to know is, we've gone ahead and scheduled training for those that choose to concealed carry. They'll go through recertification, because...
Actually, I don't think CKA would be null and void. We don't have...
If we don't have a motion to suspend it?
No, I still...
I guess it's superseded.
We're legally authorized to implement...
Yeah, it's superseded by the new law.
I don't think it is, though, because we're still allowed to regulate the concealed carry for employees and volunteers. Now, it is, if it, and I don't recall if we ever mentioned carry. I don't think so. This is, but I don't think it's invalid. I think it's still valid.
But we're moving ahead just as if rule CK was in effect, because we need to. We have to schedule the training so far ahead of time now. And again, summer schedules are horrible to try to schedule the numbers that we have to schedule. One of the things I think would be important is that, as we talk to our staff about this, this is a totally different issue than we faced when we originally went into CKA. You're gonna get totally opposite arguments from the same individuals. Because I have been approached by two individuals that were very big part of CKA, one in favor and one in opposition. And I tell you what, I don't know where they stand. We've been told that we need to require certain things from our principals, which we know the law does not allow, but in the past, that person's position was, no guns in schools. And now it's, the principals, you're gonna have to ask who's carrying every time they come in. So, this is gonna be totally different. I think you're gonna have different arguments. And we've done it since 2017. We've had employees that have carried and not had one incident. Not one person has said, hey, you got a gun on, under your coat. Those are things we were concerned about. And the qualifications, the qualifications are high enough that I'm fairly confident in those who have gone through that, they're safe. Individuals who hasn't gone through that, not so confident.
On the hand, since we adopted it, we've been relatively safe.
And the good news is, we kind of found a loophole in the law last year. So, 100% of the money we're spending on training and ammunition, we reimburse, we're gonna get back from the state this year. We also put in for our ALIS training. We're gonna see if we can recuperate those costs. Hopefully, they don't realize they created that law last year, this law this year, and more districts are gonna take advantage of that. But we are. So, we, we had a, we were ahead in the game. I think we paid a little bit more because we were first to do this. Learning curve was steep. I don't necessarily want to be the first to do this this time. So, that's why we table it, give us another 30 days, then we start this 50-day process. We're in no hurry. We're not gonna have 600 employees decide to concealed carry one day. It's not gonna happen. So, anyway, it's kind of where we are. So, my recommendation here in a few minutes will be to table this and tell further notice, give Jeff and I a chance to go through this, and really what we'll prepare is that first round of documents. We'll have all that ready for you. And then the board will have to decide kind of the direction to go. Do we do away? Do we modify? And I can show you, I have a draft policy, which I think is interesting, from Cheyenne, where they're basically saying, no, we're not gonna do anything. Well, you just did. You created a policy that said we're not doing anything. So, interesting, but it probably won't fall that into. So, anyway, that's kind of my recommendation, Chairman.
I just envision there's going to be some opposition from the complete opposite end of the spectrum as we move forward with this, that are going to oppose any kind of restriction that we might have on the new law.
Exactly, yep. No doubt.
Okay, that is the last of our discussion items. We will now move on to public comments.
Don't make, I'll come up with one.
And as you approach, please give your name and your address, and we're going to limit to you for three minutes. Okay, no discussion, uh, no dis, public comments. We will now move on to our action items. So, I hope everybody had a chance to review the personnel within our documents that was emailed to us. So, I need a motion to approve the position for the dean of students for EMS and DMS, as discussed or identified in our documents.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
I have a motion.
Second?
I have a second. Any discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I might have to have a count. Okay, so I need to have a count on that. I only heard a couple of ayes, and I need at least five of us to, for this. So, I don't know if I have five. So, I need a motion to approve. All in favor, we'll just go right to there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. I'm not gonna call for a roll call. We were a little louder that time.
Chairman Peterson, you can skip B. We already approved the rec agreement and the consent items.
So...
If you have comments, we'll listen to comments.
No, we are. I think there are a couple of comments that we would like to make. We already approved it, but there are still some concerns that Mr. Wheeler and Mrs. Whaling has brought to my attention. So, if you guys would like to maybe talk about that a little bit?
The grass is dying. They're not watering. It looks as, as bad as it did a year ago. So, we have a rec board meeting on Thursday, and that is, needs to be addressed, because it's not...
We've already, we've had Principal Peterson call in, and Director Jared Dennis. We're paying for the water. We told them, pour the water on. Don't, city's not paying for it. Just pour the water on it. Hopefully, they'll do that. A month ago, it looked great.
It's getting to the point where it's beyond...
Really?
Yeah. I was there, I was there Saturday and watched it. It sounded good.
So, I don't know what their excuse is.
Well, Dan can ask them and go from there.
Yep.
Who's on that with you, who's on that board?
Brian.
And a lot of the, still, but on Facebook, people complaining, they're like, we'll call the school district. And I'm like, it's not the school district. It is the rec department.
Yep.
So, not happy.
After all that, last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, after the, I mean, because that was the main topic of conversation.
We brought it up last month, and she seemed to think everything was good, so... I did drive by last month. I haven't driven by since, but it's not good.
It's scary. I feel like we're about to be enlightened.
Okay. Mr. Dennis?
Just, just for information, as Superintendent Thomas referenced, I did visit with Kim yesterday. As I was up there, she told me that they were having issues with their controller. I said, what is it that we need to do to help with that? She says, they have it fixed. And I said, does that mean that we will have water starting, what is today, Tuesday? And she said, yes. So, the difficulty we're having as a district, and I'm sharing this with more, with Brian and Dan, is we have no control. The controller they have, they have complete access. It's a digital controller, and we don't get, we have asked for access, but they have not given us any control of that. My recommendation, if I could make a recommendation to the board, if nothing comes about this year where we're happy, I would propose that next year, we as a district take owner, full ownership of that property as far as maintaining and controlling that. I've visited with our law... I've visited with our loans and grounds and our maintenance guys, and they agree as well. I know that there's going to be a financial expense as we do that because I'm going to basically hire an individual for the summer who will do nothing, but we will go through that entire system so that we can be comfortable and make sure that it's at least looking like the rest of the property that we own, so...
So, I'm going to ask this question. How is it possible that we have no control over the water that goes onto our property?
And we're paying for the water.
And we're paying for the water.
I, this is a great question.
It's not just a great question. I mean, how is that possible? How is the city got control of the water that we use?
It was the same conversation I had because, as you know, we took over Evanston Field.
Football field.
And I am still having conversations with them to say, "Hey, we need to have control of this." If not, I'm going to cut the wires that are going to the football field, and we will put our own controller. Because it's ours. We're maintaining it now. We should be able to do the things that we need to.
Not just maintaining. This is where it's upsetting to me. Aspen, Aspen is our property. How are they controlling, the City of Evanston, the Parker Rec, controlling our water on our field?
So...
Is there a memorandum of understanding that was signed? That's the agreement. We just approved.
It specifies that...
It does. Yeah. It doesn't say who has control, but they're to water, so they have control. But it should be a dual use.
They should be using our system.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, Dan and Brian, push that way. This needs to be fixed by the rec center. Their responsibility.
And I don't think by next year. I think it's got to be rectified within the next couple of months.
That's where you and I agree. This has to be rectified immediately.
Immediately.
It needs to be taken care of, but if not, I would like to take full control. And you as a board, you know, that's something that you would determine. But this is year five that I, by January, I got calls, and it's difficult.
I can.
But we've lost trees.
But my point is, can somebody go by there and see if there's water?
No, I guess my point is this. We've lost how many mature trees up there and other trees that there is a dollar value associated with that from their lack.
I do think those trees came from the rec center.
There was some water this morning.
Did we plant them?
Well, the pine trees we're losing left and right, and a lot of that's due to lack of water. Every tree that has been planted on the field, on the soccer portion there, has been part of the Arbor Day tree planting. And we have, this is the third time that they have planted and have not taken care of that. And a lot of this due to the lack of water and/or maintaining a perimeter around those trees for mowing and kids.
Well, this is not going to look good to them, especially when they want $40 or $50 million to build a new aquatics center. A lot of community members are going to say, "You can't take care of this. How are you going to take care of that?" In my opinion.
Yeah. I was very bold with Kim yesterday when I was up there. And I said, "Look, if I'm calling you, I'm sure others will be." And I said, "We will be having a board meeting tomorrow night, and the rec mail is part of that discussion. And so, just be aware, we're not happy right now. And I will be relaying my unhappiness to the board."
Well, I think you can convey Brian and Dan to them that we're not trying to take this.
I share your sentiments. Well, we informed of that, not the board meeting last time, but before, that, you know, summer's coming. It's spring, summer's coming. You need to do this.
Pour the water on it, isn't it?
Yeah, and that hasn't been taken care of. Their obligation has not been taken care of, so...
It was clear in the meeting, or in at least one of our meetings, it was made clear that all ayes are on this, and so it needs to be dealt with.
It was last meeting.
Yeah, it was last meeting.
It was last meeting.
Yep.
There was water when I drove by this morning.
That's good tonight.
I mean, there's portions of that field that are already dead.
Okay, that's progress.
Let's hope that we're arguing about something that's already been resolved. But I guess we'll find that out.
Great question to take to your board meeting. I appreciate that.
The other part, Jared, is you probably need to go out there and look. If there are parts of the field that are to the point where they shouldn't be used, they need to find someplace else until it grows back.
Yeah.
And I think we can tell them that. They have the field down by the ponds now.
It's dying too.
Okay. Well, that's not ours.
I know.
Yeah, but it is.
Let them kill their own field then. But that may be necessary is to say, "You can't use this area of the field."
I think that's just one portion, but them having control over what we water and don't water. And we don't have access to that's got to be taken care of in the media.
We need to have the dual control.
I need to log in to be able to get into their system to be able to do the thing so that when we have conversations like this, I can say, "Look, I've looked at this, and this is what's..."
Yep.
Right now, I have nothing but conversations based on what she shares with me, and then I have to just take it from there, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, thanks.
Thanks, John.
Okay, well, that was nice. We'll move on to... I opened it up. Sorry.
Oh.
It's okay. We'll move on to action item number C, the first reading policy of the sex-designated facilities.
If we could...
Go ahead and change the name of it.
Yeah, let's call it Designating Facility Usage.
Designating Facility.
Designated Facility.
Policy, ACF.
Designating Facilities.
Yep, facility usage. Thank you.
And you called it what?
Designating.
Yeah, I know.
ACF.
ACF?
Designating or designated?
Designating.
Says Designating Facility Usage.
Our intention is to approve that tonight?
Yes.
First reading.
First reading. So, we need approval on the first reading of the policy Designating Facility Usage, ACF.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion?
Just one question. It says sex in the policy. Is that correct? Should it say gender?
It was really in the title. I don't know if it says sex other places.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. And again, we can go through it and make sure, look at that.
First reading.
Yeah. That's why I didn't like the title. I think it may be in the only place it was there.
Right.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. We will move on to action item D, the first reading of policy ING, Policy and Procedures on Service Animals in Schools.
Motion approved.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion has it? Motion carries. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay. I need a motion to table rule CKA until a later date.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to table rule CKA. Any discussion?
Is there a time or a date that we want to revisit this 30 days from now, 60 days from now?
We'll have it on the agenda in July.
July.
We'll bring to you the documents in that first section.
Any other discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. I need a motion to ratify the meet and confer agreement.
Someone else second?
I have a motion. I have a second.
Jenny and Jessica?
Yep. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. We're going on to action item G, approve mill prices for the 2025-2026 school year.
Motion approved.
I have a motion from Brian.
Second.
Second from Dan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Going on to action item F, I need a motion to approve to go out to bid for insurance analysis services.
Chairman Peterson, members of the board, this is John's request that we go out to bid for services. Explains kind of what I told you is Morton, the original consulting service was $7,500. They proposed $4,200 for the work to move forward with what we agreed to in meet and confer. That exceeds what we can do without bids. So, John is requesting, and I'm requesting too, to approve the district to solicit requests, RFPs, for insurance analysis services. I'm sure we'll get more than just Morton bidding, and we'll have a competitive bid. So, you can see that it'll be twice in the paper. We'll encourage Morton to continue to bid. Talked to Morton today. They're good with that. August 12th is our, kind of our deadline to have that decided.
And then that was, it was $42,000, not $4,200?
Yeah, $42,000.
$42,000. That's why we have to go out to bid with it, so... What is our max on it? 25?
25.
Yeah, 25, so, okay. All right.
It says here $42,000 annually, so would we put it out to bid again the next year or...
I have, at this time, I have no interest in continuing services longer than one year.
One year, yeah.
So, this will be a one-year contract. They would love to be a part of us annually, but so would every other consulting company.
Motion to approve going to bid.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries.
Chairman Peterson, members of the board, you would think this is one that I would not forget. Somehow, we skipped over the superintendent's contract.
I don't see it on here.
It's up in personnel.
Motion to table.
I have a motion to table. I agree. I don't understand.
We can discuss it in six months.
All right. It is part of our action item, so we don't have to modify our agenda. So, I need a motion to approve the action item Personnel Superintendent's Contract.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Contract approved.
Thank you.
No more action items. We can now move on to the board roundtable. Do we have any comments from the board?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I live right by Clark School, and I noticed that there's a chain link fence being put around the playground. And I was wondering why.
Yep.
We will now be addressed by the knower of all things.
We're going to be enlightened against half the ship.
So, last year about this time, our insurance company sent an auditor out and looked at all of our properties. And one of the things that they found us to think went in for safety and security was not having a perimeter fence around that field. And so, we are trying to meet those requirements, and so we've moved forward putting that fence. It was also a request from Principal Fessler as well, about that same time, to create a safety barrier.
And that's what I assumed. I just was hoping that there hadn't been an incident that had pushed that along, so...
No incident, thankfully, and hopefully this will be a good thing. Again, just for safety and security there.
Now, I got to figure out someplace else to walk the dog.
I thought you meant to go play.
Just off of your neighborhood there, there is the opening right there as you come off of the...
Yeah.
The retaining wall.
Yeah.
We'll still maintain that opening, and then we'll have the one on the other side, so...
Good, all right.
Or just throw the dog over the fence, and you can catch it on the other side.
I also have some input.
Okay.
I was privileged to hand out diplomas at Horizon High School graduation. It was the first time I've done that. And it was, to me, a very touching opportunity. I was impressed with the pride of the students who were graduating and the involvement and the pride that was clearly evident in the parents and family members and friends that were in attendance. And I wanted to offer congratulations to Brandon for the work that he does and what he's accomplished over there. And as most of you know, I have a Horizon student that works at my business with me. And he has great things to say about that program, and it clearly operates in his life. And so, I just wanted to offer congratulations to Brandon and Horizon High School and everybody involved with it, and thank them for the opportunity that I had to participate.
Great.
Sounds good. Any other discussions? Okay. I need a motion to leave the Union County School District Number 1 Board of Trustees Board Meeting.
Remove that we leave. Second.
That adjourn.
Sorry.
I got a motion. I got a second.
Who's the motion? Brian, Brian?
Any discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. We are done. I would ask that we go back into the executive session.
Dave, did you make a motion for that? Go back to executive session?
No, I was going to just go back into it now and then make a motion to start in there.
Okay.
We never actually ended it. We suspended it.
There will be no business. You will adjourn from any executive session.
We will adjourn. I will adjourn in there.
Sounds good.
Do I need to sign anything?